Call to order, the July 18th, 2019, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We have two new public hearings. First one, I'm gonna open them both together. Senior Center, One Surrey Drive, 477 Sutton Street, 505 Sutton Street, and Zero Sutton Street, applicant town of North Andover. Application for special permit, site plan review, shared common driveway, parking on a separate lot, satellite parking under Chapter 195, Article 8, Part 3, Section 195-2.2, Paragraph 21, and Section 195-8.8.D4B of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw to allow for the construction of a two-story, 13,500-square-foot GFA senior center with associated amenities, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other site improvements. Project is located within the B2 and R4 zoning districts, along with 505 Sutton Street, Sutton Street Redevelopment LLC. Application for a special permit, site plan review, multifamily housing, common driveway, modification of landscaper requirements for off-street parking, reduction in parking and construction of a new building exceeding 2,000 square feet under Sections 195-4.80, 195-2.2, 195-8.8, Section 195-8.10 over the North Andover zoning bylaw, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, to allow for the construction of three multi-story buildings with associated parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other site improvements. The project is located within the Business 2 zoning district. Okay. Hello.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm gonna provide a little bit of background as to the progression from town meeting that this project went to and received some relief in terms of zoning bylaw changes to today, where we're presenting a really public-private development across several parcels of land. And thank you for opening them simultaneously, because as you'll see in many of the presentation boards, you're gonna see both projects side by side. So as an introduction, I am Jean Enright, the interim director of community and economic development. I'm here with the project team for the senior center of John Catlin, the project architect, and Jim DeVellis, the project engineer. So as a little background, in 2006 Sutton Street redevelopment, others refer to this entity as MinCo, they purchased the former Knights of Columbus at 505 Sutton Street, and subsequent to that, they purchased the two-family located at 477 Sutton Street, which is the adjacent parcel. In April of 2017, the town received notification from Mass. Housing Partnership that they had received a request for determination of project eligibility at the KFC site, essentially a 40B application to the site. As proposed, that development would have consisted of 163 rental units, of which 41 would be affordable. The units consisted of 24-studio, 46-one-bedroom, 76-two-bedroom, and 17-three-bedroom. In November '17, the developer received a preliminary determination of project eligibility under the 40B rules, so they were okay to go forward with the town. It is my understanding that around this time, the former town manager, Andrew Mailer, approached the developer and began discussions for a public-private development opportunity. As a result of those discussions, a conceptual plan for a four-story multifamily development consisting of 136 units, so opposed to the 163. The breakout of those units were 28-studio, 55-one, 53-two-bedroom, and no-three-bedroom. And a senior center approximately 13,600 square feet, including 80 dedicated parking spaces, was created. And that's the plan on the easel to the right. As you will see through tonight's presentation, we have progressed from that conceptual plan to the lower presentation on the left. But again, you'll see that progression tonight, and we found it to be really, really important because on the conceptual plan, the parking, although it was intended to be dedicated, you can see in the red line, it was really conceptual at the time and just shown as a box in front of a senior center. And today, you'll see that that has really been isolated, separated, and provides for really good circulation. In May 2018, town meeting approved these lots, meaning the 505 Sutton Street and the 477 Sutton Street, to be rezoned from general business and residential four to business two, which allowed for the building height to be a maximum of four stories, not to exceed 55 in height by special permit. Town meeting also approved authorization for the board of selectmen to accept a donation or gift of a parcel of land located on Sutton Street consisting of approximately 57,300 square feet for the purpose of a senior center and necessary parking spaces. Should these proposals be approved, the developer intends to donate that parcel of land. As will be explained a little later, during the site design process, it was determined that in order to have the optimal parking and circulation configuration for both sites, a configuration that allows for 81 dedicated senior center parking spaces, the locus needed to include One Surrey Drive. The developer then purchased this parcel, and it has been incorporated into the site plan for the senior center. So here we are today. Both of these proposals will need approval by your board and the ZBA for special permits, variances, and an A&R plan. We have each filed applications with the ZBA, and the public hearing process opened on July 9th. Their next meeting is August 13th. Although these projects have been filed as two separate applications, as you will see, the proposals include access and maintenance crosshesements, and special attention has been paid to ensure a cohesive site in terms of architecture, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. So from here, I will turn the presentation over to our architect, John Catlin, and engineer Jim DeVellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim DeVellis. I'm a professional civil engineer with DeVellis Serene. So we're providing civil engineering and landscape architecture services to the town through John Catlin from Catlin Petrovic Architects. With me also is our senior associate, Katie Martin, who's our registered landscape architect. So I think what I'm gonna do, if it's okay with the board, I'm just gonna walk you through what's behind you on the screen. It's just a color rendering of the site plans that we had submitted. In your packet, you would've had a full set of site plans that has an existing conditions stamp survey, a layout materials, grading, drainage, utility, landscape plan, details, and a lighting plan, so.
Can you just put us in context? Were your engineering plans designed exclusively for this part and parcel, or did they address the entire parcel boat project?
Yeah, the Osco, contracted by the town, is to provide services just for the senior center parcel. I've gotta say, we work close with the architects and the civil engineer on the residential because there's a kind of a dividing. So the grading and the drainage and the movement and stuff, we work together on. Integrated.
Two separate plans were distributed. Both went for peer review, so the peer reviewer is looking at them as they are conjoined, but there are also two separate applicants.
Yeah. So, and that's a good point. So when we submitted this, we received back peer review for the drainage and all the engineering plans of fire, DPW. We've gone through all the comments. We're, following this meeting, will resubmit new sets of plans in addressing all of the comments. There's really, the comments that we received with respect to the senior center are all achievable, so we're not gonna be changing the plans from a bird's-eye view, looking down, so. So this site, which you see pretty much in color, is about two acres, is where you see the color here. So the access drive off of Sutton Street is designed on the residential component, but it's a shared access drive. So as you enter off of Sutton Street, residential component is down here, you would take a right to go into the senior center, the adult center here. And we put these arrows here, they will be painted on the ground, but it shows a one-way circulation in, and you've got parking along here, you have a drop-off to the two-story building in the peach color here, about what, 13,500 square feet, two-story building. As you come through here, you could circulate back around, you have full access to all the parking spaces, and there's 81 parking spaces designated for the senior use. And then you would exit strictly onto Surrey Street. There's signage that says "Right Turn Only," "Stop, Do Not Enter" from Surrey Street. So as you come out, you come out Surrey Street, and that's the way the circulation goes. So associated with the site, what you see is a lot of landscape, heavily landscaped fencing to separate the residential component, residential properties down here, a series of rain gardens throughout the one, two, three rain gardens, and some of the things that differs from the original plan that was submitted or anticipated with the town meeting. The building is larger, but we provided a lot more outside amenities for the people using the building to be able to go outside. There's a outdoor patio area and just a little more open breathing space. With respect to some of the underground stuff, we've got full drainage analysis that was submitted, we've mitigated, we're infiltrating back into the ground, we're cleaning it with water quality structures, and that's all in the plans. We've got potable water and fire suppression water available at the streets. The houses that were here were serviced by sanitary sewer, town sewer, and we're doing the same thing. So water sewer, gas, electric, all underground and all readily available and designed into the site. So with respect to the building itself, John, you wanna talk a little bit about the building and some of the intricacies to that?
One of the, we were brought on after town meeting and after the kind of placeholder that was presented at town meeting. Is that still back there? Here. Where's that cute little guy? If you could set him up here. This was an effort to get a placeholder for town meeting and achieve the parking requirements. But one of the problems with that, and when we came on board, we were able to help them understand it, is that you have to drop off at the senior center with the passenger door facing entrance, which would become quite encumbered on that. Also, you really need a lot more land because you can't have, you can't have parking tied up at the entrance. This is a special use group, about maybe 15% to 20% of our user group are people who are what we sometimes refer to as slowgoers or no-goers, they have a wheelchair or walker, takes quite a bit of time to get out of that car. So part of this design process is to make sure that we allow that to happen without interfering with movement and circulation on the site with other cars. The other issue too that we wanted to point out is that there's a lot of activity here with housing, and although it's a little bit off hours from when we are using the center, it's really good for elders, one of them, is to enter with clarity, that is one-way in. It's best to enter off a main road as one-way in in order to have the time it takes to make that decision to turn into the site. And leaving the site, it's best that we leave not crossing the same cars coming in, but leaving out, and the short distance from the exit to the street intersection gives you a clear intersection of leaving onto, entering onto Sutton Street with a stop sign. Often, it gets confusing up here when you're both coming in and out, especially with additional user group from the housing. So the idea is create the circulation that was within the site, but ultimately left out the other side in a one-way manner. The building itself, as Jim pointed out, we're able to now adjust the building so we can get some outdoor activities, including perhaps a bocce court or what have you, out of the building on this side with a clear entrance here, and then we have our service entrance away from the main entrance, because they do a lot of meals on wheels and activity that way, and we don't wanna interfere with the main entrance of the building. Some of the images of the building is, in a traditional way, it's a fairly conservative building. It has the outdoor area here, you can see it curves down at this end here and this end here.
That's the side that we face, Sutton Street.
Sutton Street. This is the prime side. The other side, the entrance, which you see from across the lot here, from within this area, is the main entrance here. The service entrance is here, or the, I'm sorry, looking outside now. I'm usually pretty good outside now, but this is the service entrance, this is the main entrance. And we placed above the requirements for handicap parking adjacent to the building rather than out on the site. And that's the general approach to the building. It's both, it has a stone, a stone base to it, and clatter and vertical siding, standard shingle roofing, and some.
Standard shingle roof.
On the main, that purpose room. Large windows facing to Sutton Street, and the building has a lot of internal skylights for natural lighting in the building. And it's about 13,800 square feet. Up there.
How big is the current senior center?
It's about.
Just over seven.
Seven thousand, we're about double the size, and much, much better parking, as you well know. Everybody parks down here, lot's full, and access to the building is difficult for people with mobility issues.
I'm Eric Loth from MinCo Development, and we're the sponsor of the multifamily development. So I don't know if you have questions for the senior center team that you'd like to ask now, or ask them all at the end together, we can give you a run-through from our perspective. And we brought our whole team here, I'll introduce them. We wanted to try to get through as much as possible tonight. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda, especially the next meeting, sounds like it's gonna be Avalon and us, so we'll try to run through as much as we can and answer as many questions as we can. But thank you for having us tonight, for having these special meetings. I know everybody's taking time in the summer, so we appreciate it. The guy who's been flipping all the boards for us is Scott Cameron, who's our civil engineer, who's been working with us on this for a couple of years.
Travis Vanoway?
(laughing). Also brought Karen Paul Estrino from MinCo. If you don't know us, we're, our office is down on Sutton Street, 231 Sutton Street. We've been there over 30 years, we've done a lot of projects in town. Ann Martin is our environmental consultant, there's really not a lot of environmental on the site, there's a little wetlands offsite, she can probably run through it in a couple of minutes, just so you have a feel for what's there. We brought Michael Radnor, our landscape architect, as well. Who else? We've brought Giles Hamm, who, he's our traffic consultant. So he just brought a couple exciting slides that he can probably run through pretty quickly as well. Did I miss anybody?
Rob, the architect.
Oh, the architect, Rob.
Where are they?
The guy who actually designed the pretty buildings is here as well, so we thought we'd try to run through some of that. Probably the, probably the best person to do most of it is Scott, to kinda give us an overview, and if you wanna hear anymore of how the piece has moved around, because when we first started on this, you know, X number of years ago, we thought, we've done five or six of these 40Bs. My father-in-law did some actually in the early 70s before, you know, private companies could really do this. So we had this long history of doing them. And when Mr. Mailer came to us and said, gee, we've really outgrown the senior center, and the parking's tough out here, because all the people from the mixed-use buildings park out there, some of the people that work here park there, you know, we've been looking for a site, this is kinda the only place we can find, can we put this here? And we said, we really wanna do a housing development, because that's what we do. And he said, well, do you think we could put them both there? And we said, well, we think that'd be great, because if we can attract some tenants that would use that, those are great tenants. Right? And so we started looking at the site, and the Knights of Columbus site is about four acres. But once we understood, I think, what the senior center entailed, the size and the parking requirements, it was just putting too much together. So we went knocking on doors, and we had the opportunity to acquire the piece next door. And then the original plan that we brought to town meeting, we had picked a senior center from another town, just a template of one, because I've never built one, we didn't really know.
Can I ask you a question? When you went to town meeting, did we, did you have that other piece of property at that point?
We had, we had Knights of Columbus and the one property next door, which is a two-family.
No, it's another, and you added another now.
We subsequently added a third, because as we found out, once the town decided, A, they could accept the land at town meeting, and B, they changed the zoning to B2, they brought on the architect, who said, gee, that's kind of an older template, it doesn't really work for some of the reasons he suggested, from circulation, size, and everything. And then we said, gosh, we're kinda stuck again, well, there's one more two-family, let's go talk to them, which we subsequently did. It turned out, the woman who was moving up to Wyndham, it actually happened to be good timing, so we were able to acquire that. And that's when we started moving the pieces around on the puzzle a little bit, just to give you the background. But I'll let Scott run with it, if you have questions, please ask.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Scott Cameron, I'm the owner of the Moore and Cameron Group at 66 Elm Street in Davis, Massachusetts. I'm a civil engineer, registered professional civil engineer. As Eric said, I've been working on this, this site, actually, my company surveyed it back in 2008, a long time ago, and I've been working actively on this for about three or four years. We've gone through the various stages of this that were described previously. So we've had some familiarity with it over, over that time. I wanted to start just briefly, following up on the different parcel aggregation that Eric was describing. Just took the existing conditions plan and highlighted the four parcels that are, we're kinda master-planning all them together with the, with the public project and the private project. So the Knights of Columbus property, as I'll call it, is two parcels, actually. There's this orange highlighted one which encompasses the building, and around 2008, they'd actually cut off a separate parcel out back, which they had been looking at maybe selling for development, but there's really two parcels here that are associated with that. This is the 477 parcel in blue, and then, so the blue, the green, the orange, what went to town meeting, that's what we had control of at that time. As we went through the design development process, when John's team came into the picture, it became clear that we had to add more real estate, which is this purple property, that's One Surrey Drive. So it's kinda the assembly of the four different parcels that encompassed the site. So that's the site.
Can you point out the different streets that are involved?
So this is, this is Surrey, that comes up and around, and then this is Sutton. And then this is Osgood, on the side of the plane. So this is China Blossom, you have residential here, on the other side of Surrey, the airport on the other side of the street. And just off this, you can't see it, but the hangar bays and large buildings are right around this area, just off the plane. So going through the site design, you know, as you can imagine, we've been through several iterations of this site design at this point in time, starting with the original site eligibility letter to where we are today, and various iterations of that plan. I'll try to speak mostly to this. You do have in your packages the full technical plan set with the civil drawings, which are up behind you now, in that you have all your site layout information. I'm gonna talk about that site layout plan a little more specifically, your utility plans, your grading and drainage plans, your construction details. We provided a stormwater management report, and as Jim mentioned before, our package also went off a peer review with the same consultants, we're in receipt of those comments, as well as all the town department staff comments. Again, similar, we're not seeing anything that's gonna result in any changes, there's some additional supplemental information, backup clarifications they've asked us to submit, so we'll be working on those, and the plan was to take feedback tonight and incorporate everything into one, hopefully, final plan set that would incorporate all, and address all the comments. So on the residential side of the project, we're, you know, we've proposed a shared driveway. So one of the things we're doing is we're consolidating three driveways, this is two in the Knights property and one for 477.
Sorry, before you, can you just point out each of the buildings, what they are, how big they are, and where's the senior center, just so we're all oriented to?
Yep. So as you come into the site, there's three buildings. You have a building here, you have a building here, and you have a building here, and this is your senior center.
So senior center is up by Sutton Street.
Right. So the idea, and Rob Schaefer will get into the massing and how that, you know, kinda fits on the street line, but what, you know, really the idea is we want it to form a cohesive building line coming down the street. You see the senior center and the building, and this residential building are near the street, and they're about the same plane as well. And one of the things we've done, before the zoning board of appeals, we've asked for a variance for setbacks, and really that variance is to take this building, which we started as a four-story building, lower the massing down to a three-story, but in doing so, it spreads it out, we need a longer building to accommodate the same square footage. And that put us right on the proposed lot line, and you'll see the A&R plan filed for our next meeting that will create this lot line, but it's interior lot line between the two projects, and that created a situation where we need a zero setback on that lot line to keep the massing in that building down. Rob will get into that in a little bit, but we did go before, we are before the zoning board requesting that relief. The other point of relief before the board is the floor area ratio. Again, it's a, it's a consequence of creating this lot line where we need it for the building area for the property that will be the residential property, but the overall site actually meets, is well below the floor ratio.
What is the floor ratio of yours specifically and in total?
Yeah, so on, on the site itself, it's 1.1, but overall, it's 0.68, and the requirement's .75. So for the entire, you know, again, we kinda master-planned the entire site together, and we're left with this lot line, and that's where we ended up with here. So we're trying to work with that, and that's to convey, the parcel that would be given to the town comes through here, around, and up. So that's the parcel that would be donated.
I think what works is that there's not a lot, what is it, in the numerator, you know, for the town name piece, that's why it drives the total down.
Yeah, and MinCo also still owns this piece all the time. The TUGUs, we're, we're not including that in the floor, we're just looking at this as a standalone property. So while we're talking about the buildings and the massing, where we ended up with this design as far as a unit breakdown, I'll go through the overall numbers. 28 studios, 55 one-bedrooms, 44 of those will have a den, so that it's like a one-bedroom plus workspace or a den, and then 53 two-bedrooms. So about two-thirds of the unit breakdown are one-bedroom units, okay? No three-bedrooms.
So how many residents do you expect?
I haven't run that calculation, and I think we would typically say one and a half for a two-bedroom and one for a one-bedroom, and the studio's probably one, but we'll have to, we can answer that for you next time, more clearly.
And the number of school-age kids would be great, too.
The school said it wouldn't have an impact, that was the letter that we got.
Yeah.
And after all, Tuesday night, we spent an hour, at least a half, you did math of how many school-age kids. I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but if we ask them to do it, you guys should do it, too.
Due to the fact there weren't any three-bedroom units, that there wouldn't be any significant impact?
At least in the last hearing, it was .25 per two-bedroom, right?
Yes.
That was the calculation, how many two-bedrooms?
I would assume with something like this, if it's roughly half of what we saw in the other one, it would be roughly half the number of, give or take, I mean, but it would be good to have that, I think.
What was the number? Do you guys have it again?
I believe it's 44 two-bedrooms.
53.
53.
This is the site plan, the site layout plan that's in your packets, helps clarify things a little bit. I highlighted, this is the proposed lot line here, okay? The blue is the building setback that's created from that lot line, the highlighted area, that's a section of the building that extends into the setback. But these are the three buildings here, and then the senior center. What is on this plan is the zoning matrix, the parking tables, that has the unit breakdown on it, so you can see that information. This entire development that we've master-planned will share a driveway. As I mentioned, you have two driveways on the Knights property, one driveway for 477, so three driveways, we consolidated into one. We have adequate site distance here, which Giles will get into shortly in his presentation, but you have one lane entering, and then you have two lanes exiting, so you have a right-turn dedicated lane and a left-turn dedicated lane, that'll help facilitate flow off the site, and then reducing curb cuts also improves traffic circulation on Sutton Street. So as you come to the site, one of the changes that we're able to accommodate by adding this parcel is really a better circulation. So the original design, you'd come in, and then you kinda hit a T here, and you had to take a right or a left, and then come back into this area, but what we're able to do is facilitate kind of a spine through the site, which kinda forms a cross through here. So as you come in, you can, your decision point is you take a right into the senior center if you're going there, you take a left, and you come down here and get into the underground garages, which serve both buildings. And this access, actually, even though this is two buildings above ground, actually, the garage comes all the way down and around, so this is all underground parking underneath these buildings. And this little bump out here is actually a one-story amenity space, okay? So we're trying to create some separation and break up that massing on the building. And then your third, this ways goes straight, and this effectively serves like a cul-de-sac, and you can come around and come right back out. That accommodates fire, truck, turning movements, emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles, et cetera, and then the normal, normal traffic that would come through here. 25-foot aisles, the dimensional, dimensions of this do meet the North Andover zoning bylaw dimensionally. The total parking spaces we're asking for on this are 95 surface spaces and 120 garage spaces, so more of the parking is below ground, so there's obviously, you know, making good efficiency of the land by not putting that above ground, we can put that towards landscaping. And that works out to a ratio of 1.58 spaces per unit, the development, which far exceeds market, you know, what the market drives and what, you know, the developer's comfortable with, and also far exceeds kinda national standards. Nationally, for this type of development, it averages about 1.35 parking spaces per unit, okay? So it's things, you know, people work from home more, one car per family, there's, there's more efficiencies here, so we provided that parking. On the utility design, there is adequate sewer capacity, water capacity, gas, electric, it in Sutton Street, we've done hydrant flow tests, we've been We've been working with the Department of Public Works on that. We will be converting, producing pump for the Knights' property to a gravity connection out to Sutton, so we're eliminating that pump out to the municipal sewer, which is a benefit. Having gravity flow is always better. And the water pressure and flow are more than adequate for what we're proposing to do here. And there will be a common vein for water sewer coming into the site that will serve all the buildings, and we'll split that off with your fire protection, your potable water, and your hydrants throughout the site. From a stormwater perspective, I highlighted in the plan, just the stormwater system, we see a lot of green on here. We put a lot of, most of our work on this, once we got through the site layout, was engineering the drainage system. And we have a combination of a few things going in here, trying to incorporate some low-impact development techniques, as well as structural techniques. So, the islands that will bookend what you see from the street, these are actually going to function more like rain gardens, so the parking lot's designed to drain into these islands. And then there's receptors in those to convey the water into an underground system. So you're kind of going through a landscaped, kind of bio-retention island, and then into an underground system here. There are also underground systems to handle the roof runoff around, spread out throughout the site here. And then this all goes out through one outlet to the municipal drain system here. The property is right on the edge of the watershed district. It skirts the property here. All we're really doing in that zone is grading work, and we have the drain connection. So, we don't have any drainage connections within 400 feet of a wetland, and the lake is much further away than that. But what we are doing, because we know this system does eventually go down to the lake, we're providing additional treatment of stormwater as it exits the site. So, we're meeting the treatment standards as we get through the system, as it's going out. And right before it leaves the property, we added an additional scrubbing structure, just to give it some additional polishing before it exits the site. So we did provide a lot of stormwater treatment and management.
Again, is the watershed line inside your property or outside?
Just outside.
Oh.
Just inside the property, so it...
So why would you be sending the water towards the watershed as opposed to away? Because this is the natural flow way.
No, that's where it goes now. In fact, the divide kind of runs across the site this way, where all of this now goes that way. And there are actually catchphases on the site now that just drain straight out from the parking lot with no treatment, no mitigation, nothing. So the site all goes out that way. And then you have from about here over that goes in the other direction. So we engineered it to mimic that, because we don't want to overload the municipal system, right? So if we took everything and sent it that way, it could cause problems going the other way. So just good engineering practice.
You're saying for a big portion of that land, it drains towards the lake, even though it's outside the watershed line?
Right.
But, did you mean that once you're done engineering the site, it will drain that way? Or did you mean that the current state is that it drains that way?
Current state is that it drains that way. In the current state, there is no cleaning of the stormwater, and there's no effort to put it into the ground. It's just a large parking lot, the building, and it goes straight out. It's typical construction at the period that building was constructed.
Well, it calls into question how the watershed line was drawn.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Isn't that by definition how you define the line?
That's how you're supposed to define it.
I'm sorry, is that the watershed line or is that the setback from the lake?
It's the watershed line. So the zoning map dictates the limit of that watershed. And then, within that, we measure, there's different setbacks from either the water body or wetlands, 200 feet, 300 feet, there's different zones. We're outside of all the zones. Right? So if you measure from the nearest wetland, we're over 400 feet away to the nearest wetland, going in that direction. So we meet all the standards regardless, even though we're not, you know...
They just have to be just outside.
No, no, we understand that. It's a separate question as to something we should look into, not only here, but...
So, at this time, I think what I'm going to do, I'm going to turn it over to Ann Martin. She's going to have a quick blurb, and then Giles will talk about traffic, and then we'll start getting into more of the, I guess, pretty pictures.
Can you tell us just more, each of these buildings, how high they are, how many units are in each building?
Yeah. Rob's going to get into all that in the architectural presentation. So I can give you the units in each building.
It would just be helpful now, just as...
The two in back, Mr. Chairman, are four-story buildings, and the one in front is a three-story building.
Okay. So the one parallel to Surrey is four stories, the one perpendicular to Surrey is four stories, and the one on Sutton is three stories.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the unit breakdowns in each one are 45, 44, and 47. So we're pretty evenly distributed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
How are the studios, one and two bedrooms, distributed? Are they roughly proportional for each of the three buildings?
Yep. Yep. So, in building one, you have 12 studios, 15 one-beds, and 18 twos. In building two and building three, it's about the same. You have eight studios and 21 beds. And then you have 16 twos and 19 twos, respectively. So it's a similar ratio. We tried to make it as even as we could.
This really is going to be pretty quick. This is a color rendering of the site plan. Sutton Street across the top, Surrey Drive wrapping around, same orientation that you've been looking at. And there is a small, isolated wetland right here, just off-site. That places several of the jurisdictional buffer zones. This is the 100-foot buffer zone for jurisdiction by the Concom. Because it's an isolated wetland, it is not protected under the State Wetlands Protection Act. It's only a local bylaw wetland. The commission reviewed that and approved it back in October of 2016. So as a result, we will be filing with the Conservation Commission for the work within this buffer. That's all I got.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
I just want to say, it's very helpful to have a presentation, before you remove that, that not only shows your site, but shows the adjoining properties. And your earlier drawings don't, which is fine, but that is a very helpful presentation.
That's one of the better ones.
Yes. And so I want to compliment you for that. I suspect this is for the wetlands presentation, but we're likely to want to come back and look at that. And I thank you for having that representation. It's important to us to not only see what's happening on your site, but also the interaction with the neighboring properties. So that's very helpful.
We were going to close with this, kind of in context to wrap up the whole thing.
It's very good.
Since you like that so much, I won't take it down.
I was hoping you wouldn't.
Sorry, I don't have any great graphics like that.
Good evening. Giles Ham with Vanesma Associates. And we've done really a very comprehensive traffic study of this project in accordance with industry standards. We've conducted traffic counts in the area. We've looked at safety analysis, looking at vehicle speeds, accident research, and site distance at the site driveway. We've done level service analysis, and then recommendations to accommodate the site safely. The study area we looked at was really four intersections. We looked at the two-site driveways. And again, as mentioned, you, one of the site driveways will be closed, so it'll be less curb cuts on Sutton Street. We looked at the Lawrence Airport driveway, as well as Osgood Street. So those are the four intersections we did look at.
Everyone who wants to talk will get a chance, but we're not interrupting. Kevin Durney's presentation is not helpful. So what were the places that you studied?
So, you have the, we had a presentation. So we looked at four intersections, which is the two-site driveways, Lawrence Airport, and then Osgood Street. So those are the four intersections we looked at. When we met with the zoning board last week, they had questioned about Surrey Drive. So subsequent to that, we've done traffic counts at Surrey Drive, so I can tell you how much volume goes in and out of Surrey Drive, as well as we looked at the delays coming out of Surrey Drive, as well as the vehicle queues. So we did that information subsequent to the study being completed as a result of questions that the zoning board had for us.
Hold on one second, Monica. Can you put up the traffic study?
It's just really slow right now, switching. There we go.
Next.
Page two.
So go to the, so again, here's the study area, so Osgood Street, the airport, and then we have the two driveways to the site.
I may have missed the explanation you just gave, but why would you not have had Surrey and Sutton, since that's one of the points of egress from the site?
So, we were looking at it in terms of the actual impact of the residential development. Surrey Drive really came out as a result of the senior center.
I see.
So again, so we've conducted some supplemental information with respect to Surrey Drive.
And in the senior center filing, we requested a waiver from a full-blown traffic study. They have incorporated some of the senior center traffic, and in your package, there's really detail on programming and time of day of programming, and how many arrivals there are.
Okay.
So all that's in the package for the senior center.
Helpful, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
And that was provided to them just this week, and so they do plan to have an addendum that will incorporate that.
Great. Thank you.
And just to give you a level of some of the Surrey Drive information, because it did come up at last week's meeting. We look, in terms of traffic, we look at peak hours. So we look at the morning peak hour, we look at the afternoon peak hour. So the level of traffic that comes out of Surrey Drive today is about, is between 10 and 12 cars in a one-hour period that come out of that driveway. And those are, that's based on counts that we had actually done this week. Vehicle queuing during the peak hours ranges between, probably maximum of two vehicles come out, coming out of Surrey Drive, they're waiting in queue to get out on Sutton Street. The maximum delay that we saw of our vehicles trying to get out of Sutton Street over our four hours of observations was 40 seconds, how long it took you to stop and then get onto Sutton Street. So that gives you a little information on some of the Surrey Drive information that we were asked to compile at the last meeting, which we did. In terms of traffic generation of this project, at 136 units, it's about 740 daily trips, half coming in, half going out over the course of a day. The peak hour numbers are between 49 and 60 peak hour trips. The majority of that traffic, 60%, is going to go left towards the west, towards 495. The level of impact at 125 or Osgood Street and Sutton Street is about less than 1% impact.
Less than what?
Less than 1% increase in traffic during the peak hours.
So, less than 1% at Osgood?
Yeah.
I didn't catch the percent delta for Sutton.
So, we're estimating about 60% of the traffic would turn left or come in right from the west on Sutton Street.
No, no, I got that, but for Osgood, you're saying it's a 1% delta in the intersection?
Correct.
I didn't get the percentage delta for Sutton.
Yeah, I don't have that.
For the 60% that's going left.
Yeah, I don't have that exact percentage, but it's about 40 cars over about 1,300 cars.
Okay.
So it's a little over 1% for Sutton Street.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About that, just the principle, if you start with 132 units, how do you from that derive the peak hour traffic?
So, as traffic engineers, we're looking at the peak commuter hours. So we do counts in the area from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening. So within those periods is the peak hour. In the case of out here, the morning peak hour is from 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning, and the afternoon peak hour is 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. So what we do, we count for two hours. We summarize them every 15 minutes, and within those data points, we can tell you what the peak hour is.
Okay. So I'm fine with that. But if you go back the other way, because I think that sort of gives you the existing thing, and then you're going to overlay the traffic from the site, is, can you explain with 132-unit project and a mix of different apartments, I don't know if you look at the apartment type and estimate the number of people that live there, how do you estimate, I don't know, 40 or 50 peak hour exits from the site? I'm just trying to get how you go from 130 down to 40.
So that's a good question. So, I'll tell you a couple things. So the numbers that we present are based upon industry standards. So the industry has counted many, many developments like this, and we've done it as well. We find these are accurate. So they've counted many, many developments. We develop a trip rate per unit, and then we apply that trip rate per unit to this development. So to answer your question is, if we have 136 units, why do we only have 49 or 60 vehicle trips? I can tell you, I go to work at 7 o'clock every day, so I'm in my car at 6:00 and at work before 7:00, so I'm not in that peak hour. So, what you find is that, you know, 50 or 55% or less can happen during the peak hour, and the remaining of those people, some people don't go to work, some people work later, and some people go to work early, and then, there's a lot of people that go to work and work 8 to 5:00. So, that's why the numbers are maybe lower than you think. We just did a monitoring of probably a 500-unit project down in Quincy, and we found the same things, is that it's a low trip rate per unit when you think about the numbers and...
So collectively, over the course of the day, is it fair to say there's sort of, if there's 130 units, there's 130 trips, or is it higher? I'm just, I get the dispersion, thank you for that.
Well, so we have, so over a day, we have about 740 trips over the course of the day. That's 370 coming in and 370 going out over the course of the day. And it's based upon a lot of monitoring, a lot of development. So if you flip to the, Eric said I had some good slides, so I'll show you a good slide anyway. So you go down a couple more slides, down, down, down. Thank you. So, one of the things we look at and we're concerned with is safety. So when we look at safety, we look at vehicle speeds on the roadway. So we've measured over a 48-hour period, I believe here, the speeds on the roadway. And so we've calculated that. So, based upon the speeds that are out there, and the prevailing speed, we determine how much site distance we need to make to safely exit out onto the street. So based upon the speeds, which were about 35 to 37 miles an hour, we need upwards of 305 feet for safe site distance, and we have that between 250 and 305 feet. We have adequate site distances for the speeds that are out there. And that's important. So, the driveway in the project is safe as planned. Keep in mind, we are closing a curb cut on Sutton Street, which is always good to minimize curb cuts on busy streets, just to minimize its conflict points. And then finally, I'll tell you that, so the driveway beyond the stop sign control, we're going to clear vegetation out there. We'll have bicycle racks on site, and we believe this project is safe as planned.
Can you tell us a little bit about the traffic exiting onto, from the senior center? And then, you had mentioned a little bit that there was some data somewhere about hours of use, where we could, if we could pull that up.
So essentially, what we did is I asked the program coordinator to really lay out by day of week what programs and what's the attendance of those programs. So we don't have what time people depart, because a lot of times, they'll come in for a 9 o'clock program, they'll do that, and then they'll have coffee or go to a meeting, not necessarily a program, but they have news and views and different types of meetings that people will attend. So what it does show is that programming really starts at 9:00 in the morning, and by day of week. So Monday at 9:00, there's yoga that has 11 people. At 10:00, there's a combo class that has eight. On Tuesday at 10:00, there's a lecture that has 30 people. In the afternoon at 1:00, Bridges, 26 people. Zumba is at, is one of the only days of the week on a Monday that is, actually have programs starting at 3:00 or 3:30, and that has 26 people. There's another program at 12:30 for six, and movie matinee with six people. So, throughout the day, the peak is between 9:00 and 3:00. And so that's when they're coming just before 9:00, and they depart anywhere between 10:00 and 3:00, 3:30, for the most part.
We could theoretically, with a bigger place, expect, hopefully, more use and more people. I mean, I imagine the times would likely stay the same, but could get more people. I mean, I'm assuming that's the idea.
That's the idea, and that's why we're before you for parking as well. So, the 80 dedicated parking spaces, today it's a shared parking space. But we really think, we don't want to undersize the parking. We want to make sure there's enough ample room for everybody to park. The square footage is almost doubling and we don't want parking on, off-street. So, we certainly don't want it at Surrey Drive, we don't want it on Sutton Street.
And I'll say something too, sorry. Go ahead, finish your question.
Monica, can you find this? It's this one?
I didn't see it.
I'm looking to see if you sent it later.
While you look for that, I'll mention too that, as you noticed from the traffic study for the housing development, that their prime exit and entrance are after or before the hours of the senior center. So, the senior center, it's really good for our user group because they really are entering after the main exit out of the, for work hours during the weekdays. We're arriving after their peaks and we're leaving before their peaks coming back in. And generally on the weekends, there are no programs. Now, that may change. I know that they're looking to use the senior center for other community uses and that's an issue that we have not yet addressed because it hasn't been made clear by the town as to operations. But it's really important to note that, it was important to me as the designer that we would be coming in on a common driveway, but we wanted to make sure that we're coming in off-peak. And when we're leaving, we're leaving pre-peak on Sutton Street, which will make our exit out on the Sutton Street safer. I just wanted to throw that in.
What are the hours at the senior center? Is it open just for program?
Nine to four, but generally, is it nine to three now or is it nine to four? Yeah.
No, because I'm passing out the programming now, so there is some programming later than that, but the peak activity is from 9:00 to approximately 3:30.
So, do residents generally just come for the programming or is it a hangout spot?
It, there's a mix. So, people that are going to the program certainly come for that schedule, some hang out a little bit longer, some leave immediately after it. It is a mix. And this is just a week in May and then in the notes, I asked for what would be a peak week and the week in April was slightly more by day of week. And then there's annual activities. So, there's a Christmas breakfast that's put on, there's healthcare that is highly attended, but they're out of the norm, they're annual, it's one, once a year event, so.
As I recall from when, this was originally presented, most of the people that use the senior center do drive there, correct?
Yes.
And we didn't dispute that, would be the same, correct?
Correct. And I had a conversation with the director about that. There is a belief that a lot of people walk from Sutton Pond, they walk and she periodically asks and if two people say, "I walk today," it's a lot. So, she really believes, there's a shadow service for people that need to be driven there. So, eight to 10 people might take a shadow for one of these events, but for the most part, people drive. They don't all pack in the back. I certainly see them packing across the street sometimes and they're, and they walk from that direction, but...
Also, I, now that I see the slide up there, I know that the DPW and the town is planning a sidewalk along Sutton Street and a crosswalk across Surrey, a marked crosswalk because there is a park just one house down with parking.
Where, crosswalk where?
So, at McAvoy Park.
Yeah, the crosswalk could be across Surrey at the Sutton intersection. It'd be a marked crosswalk.
Okay, crossing, sorry.
And they will have new sidewalks. And that's in, I think, George Stanford's plans.
Yep.
There'll be a crosswalk here, sidewalk here, crosswalk.
Would the sidewalk all, go all the way to the park?
So, again, we have a connectivity kind of program and so we're looking to add sidewalks in various locations. The DPW director said one of his highest priorities is to bring up from McAvoy Park across these two houses until you get to Surrey Drive and then the entire frontage to China Blesso.
Yeah, I mean, it's great to have a crosswalk there, but you need to continue the sidewalk all the way down. If you're going to encourage people to cross though, you want to keep the sidewalk all the way down. Okay.
It's not part of this project, but he's also indicated that he would like to actually narrow Surrey Drive. It's a 50-foot right-of-way right now and so that would lessen the distance of the crosswalk too. But those, you know, they would have to be budgeted and scheduled.
Yes, okay. Okay, what's next?
Next up, let's get back to Mike Radner. Thanks very much, Michael Radner with Radner Design Associates from Framingham. Glad to be here tonight. You've sat through very patiently a couple of presentations and I'll be brief on the landscape. I'll also talk about site lighting. I think it's important to understand actually the existing conditions on the site and I'm glad that graphic is up over there. The site, if I can just stray from the microphone a little bit, you know, it's a fairly open site right now with the small building in the middle. The existing parking lot or paved area is, you know, roughly goes all the way around. And then there's a tree line that's sort of back in this area here, is an existing tree line. And then there's a vegetated space that is in between the parking lot and the tree line, which is really filled with, you know, I would call invasive species, it's bittersweet, there's some Japanese knotweed back there. So, you know, it's not healthy vegetation, but it is vegetation. I just wanted to point out that, you know, with every development, you gain some things and you lose some things in terms of landscape and I think losing invasive vegetation is a pretty good deal. So, I'll talk about the, there's also an existing tree line along Sutton Street. There's a series of red oaks out there of various, varying sizes and states of health. There's several of them that are, I would call them hazards right now. They're sort of, you know, big open gashes in the trunk and things like that, you can almost walk into them. So, and as part of the development, we are proposing to take down some of those trees. But let me talk to you a little bit about the proposed landscaping. As you've seen before, the entry drive bisecting the two sites, we're showing in these sort of pink-red dots here. It's a driveway that'll be lined with some ornamental trees, it provides an attractive entrance and think cherries and dogwoods, small-scale trees like that. It helps bring down the scale of the building in this area too. There's a field stone wall that will start in this location and wrap around the front of the site and that has a little bit to do with the drainage design, the underground drainage in between the building and the street. So, that acts as a retaining wall actually for that area there. The, you can see the parking lot design has a series of landscaped islands and as Scott had mentioned earlier, the, there's a good, there's a good view actually of looking from about this location up here back towards the senior center is on the right on that drawing and the Sutton Street multifamily is on the left. It gives you a good idea of the scale of the buildings as you come in the entry drive and you can see the depiction of the stone wall out front too. So, again, in the landscape, landscape parking lot in here, as Scott had mentioned, there's a series of underground drainage galleys in this area and the water flows into these landscaped islands. You can see some shade trees in the middle of these islands and then these are four light poles and the other four islands, there's also two light poles at the entrance. I'll talk about, a little bit about lighting in a few minutes, but suffice to say that these six light poles can light the whole site very well. The nice thing about that is also that the way that the buildings are arranged on the site, they shield the abutting uses so that, so that all these spaces around here are dark. I'll get back to that in a second.
How long are the light poles?
16 feet. I'll show you the graphic of that in a second, once I get, once I get through this. There's a series of foundation plantings at the front of each building. As was mentioned before, there's an amenity space in this section of building, this is building number three, and a patio space in this area between these two buildings here. I think what would be of most interest, I think, to this board and the abutters is the treatment along the edges of the property, along the west and south side, which is a series of coniferous evergreen trees and deciduous trees. And when I say deciduous, think large shade trees like oaks and maples, sycamores and things like that.
What size are they when you first put them in?
So, we're proposing the, for these trees, the shade trees as a three-inch caliper and that would roughly translate to a 16-foot or so height on the tree. So, it'll have a canopy that's, at planting will be maybe 10 feet. The evergreens, firs, spruces, that kind of thing, they're going to go at six to seven feet high and those will eventually get to, you know, under good planting conditions, they can get to 25, 30, 35 feet tall and they grow fairly quickly. Just one more thing about the perimeter of the site here, there's an existing fence line along the west edge of the property and that's a, you can, I put a little picture there of the type of fence, so it's one of these white vinyl PVC fences that was actually erected, I think, by the neighbors over here. It's sort of right on the property line, so those exist, okay? And then what we're proposing to do is create a new fence line along the south side and the east side of the site as well to provide the screening. It enhances the evergreen buffer and the tree planting, so it's sort of like belts and suspenders.
What type of fence would that be?
A white vinyl PVC.
Oh, I see.
Just like this, 6 feet. Michael, just for one moment, we've been working closely with the architect for the senior center as well and what they've proposed on their site is a gray cedar fence and I think what we've been trying to do is probably try to match that along the back of the site. And as Michael mentioned, the stone wall on the front of the site, I think the senior center is also going to replicate that along the rest of the site to have this cohesive. But we had talked about a vinyl fence at one point, but I think the cedar fence, vinyl always looks the same, right? And cedar, you have to take care of it. So, it's, you know, there's pros and cons, but I think the cedar fence will look better. This will be freshly managed so we can get out there and take care of it. So, I, you know, we can, we can keep having that discussion, but I just wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Can I go back to one of your comments about the trees on the perimeter with respect to the lights in the parking lot? You'd mentioned that the layout of the buildings contains and blocks, you know, some of the parking lot light. And so, I'm just looking on the left side, maybe you can point to it, where there is no building, right? And so, there's two properties adjoining that won't have that parking lot light blocked by a building. And it just struck me that it's a fairly even distribution of trees around the perimeter, which is fine, but I just want to ask you, what was your thinking on the one hand saying the buildings blocked the parking lot light, but except there? And was there any thought as to how you might compensate for that in terms of blocking the parking lot light?
Well, I assume you don't want us to put another building on there?
No.
I think that it was the, just the fortuitousness of the arrangement of the buildings.
Yeah.
And having the parking in the middle so that the, the activity in the parking lot is sort of contained within the site.
Yeah.
I don't think there was...
But that's not something that could be mitigated with more plantings?
Put more trees there.
One thing that would happen is that these lights are, they're LED and they have special reflectors and the photometrics that have been done on both sites shows that there's zero foot candles outside the perimeter. There it is.
Right.
You can see that it drops down a point or one...
Yeah, so...
So, I think we've had a chance to kind of get to be not experts, but a lot of exposure to photometrics.
Yeah, exposure.
Yeah, thank you. And also field visits to see what that looks like with the latest lighting and it is impressive to see how it drops off, but as you know, it does nothing for seeing something that's lit, you know, the reflected light. And so, that's part of the reason I'm asking. If, if there had been any thought about additional screening there, but it was just a question. I was curious what your thought process was.
I think it's a good thought and...
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. I mean, when this was originally presented, I think that to me was the biggest concern was screening and light pollution and privacy with the size of the buildings. That's why I've been asking a lot about the size of the buildings and I do want to hear about the buildings closest to Surrey, their sizes and do they have balconies? And I assume we were going to get to the architecture, so we'll see all that. That's why I haven't asked that yet, but I think the more trees and the taller the trees, even if you have to pay a little bit more to put them in a little bit taller, would be a good thing.
It's good for us too. I know one place we're definitely going to need to is the previous owner of, I guess I'd call it the second house on Surrey Drive now, there used to be a lot more trees in the back there against Sutton Street. This house here, there used to be more trees. The previous owner, I think, expanded the yard to make this nice yard, but took a lot of the buffer now, so we're going to want to pay careful attention to this line. Obviously here too, they've got more buffer, but that I think is especially important if cars are parking there, we're going to want a pretty dense buffer.
So, one of the questions I have, kind of related to buffer and you mentioned it, where the tree light was. You know, I know you superposed your picture on top of it, but it almost looks like the woods go in at the bottom of the property into, you know, into your property and I'm just trying to get an idea of, is there, from here to here, was this tree before or was it open before?
This is all existing. So, I walked this yesterday, I've walked it before, but I walked it yesterday from. So, if you walked out there now, which you're welcome to do, there are stakes out here with pink ribs on.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, from, from the stakes to the edge of the tree line, coming towards our property is about 75 feet. That's, so that's pretty heavily treated, but like Mr. Radner said, some of it is this bittersweet kind of junk, but there are some, you know, larger maples and whatever else are in there. We suspect, you know, we're holding these buildings 50, 55 feet off as far as we can. But that being said, we're probably going to need 25 feet to access for construction. So, we're going to try to leave as much as we can. Realistically, I think that means from our property line, let's say we put, you know, put a fence there and 25 feet in, I think we can preserve 25 feet of trees. So, if you were actually to walk it and look on either side of, you know, that 25, if you went and found the property line, walked 25 feet in and then walked along there, about half of the large trees by my count are on one side and half on the other. So, there's certainly a number that are going to stay and then there's a number that are going to have to come down just to be able to access.
Fair enough, fair. I mean, that's maybe one of the things that we do sidewalk, we're going to look at. I mean, it's, but it sounds like you're considering your calculus of what you're doing.
There's no point cutting down a tree this big to plant one this big if...
Were there lights? I didn't catch it on the floor, at the back of the, of the building parallel, yeah? Any lights there?
No lighting back.
Okay.
There are, in this patio area, there's a couple of low waller lights, so these are, you know, 32-inch, it's all, it's just landscape lighting.
And what's that patio area? That's for like outdoor site?
They'll beat, you know, out some, you know, tables and, you know, perhaps a barbecue. There's outdoor space for the residents too. Because you can't have a barbecue on, in an apartment, so...
Well, you can once.
So, this just shows the, it's a little bit of a complicated plan, but it shows the lighting distribution, the type of lights. So, you can see that the lampshade type fixture there with the LED. It sounds like you've seen this before. You can see the 16-foot tall light bulb here, so it gives you an idea of the scale of those relatively, you know, we try to keep them as low as possible to limit the spread of the light. But it's a, it's a very, like I said, with six poles, it's a very efficient plan. The light, the line that is, there's these ISO lines right here, this represents .1-foot candles. Just for reference, a half a foot candle, .5 foot candles is the light on a clear night with a full moon. So, .1 is pretty close to zero as you can get. So, we're definitely at zero at the property lines all around.
So, are the lights on timers? When do they go off at night?
I would think as a residential property, it's just sort of like a retail or commercial property, we could, you know, you could probably turn them off or dim them. The nice thing about LEDs is that you can dim them, but it's for a minimum for a safety factor, I would say, you know, we can't go completely dark at night, but they can be on a timer or a photocell that, you know, regulates the amount of light at night. So, we can certainly have that discussion.
I think that's the push and pull we've run into on other projects too is a resident comes home late at night on a Thursday night at 1:00 AM because they work late and you do want there to be light.
Right.
So, it's kind of tough.
What else we have?
The architect, we save the best for last, I guess.
Good evening, I'm Rob Schaefer from Mari Schaefer DMW Architects. Put two architects on a job site and we have to compete with each other a little bit and have some friendly competition. So, I did a little more work on the elevations and headed all the floor plans... So I did a little more work on the elevations and headed all the floor plans. Here's nine copies. Updated elevations on the right end of the course.
Where's your firm located?
In Gosstown, New Hampshire.
No, I think there's three on this end.
Yeah. I got plenty.
There's a lot.
Yeah, kidding.
Are these like, are these X's?
Yeah, those are X's.
I don't have.
One thing I'd like to just start with as a sort of a transition with site, from
the site, discussions we've had is on PBC zero, flip through a few, you'll see the overall garage plan. The under buildings two and three, it's combined garage, which gave us additional parking under there. And just to get a good overall view of that, you can see it on that sheet. This one here. There'll be elevator access to each building, stair access as well for egress. There's voids in both garages for additional storage. That will work out with the owner and figure out how that gets used, but I thought, point that out so you can see what that overall scheme looks like under the buildings. One thing, this one here, thought to start with to talk about is how when we went from the previous hundred-and-sixty-three or so units and down to one-thirty-six, allowed us to reduce the size of the Sutton Street building, which I think was of interest to a number of people. You can see how they brought in the senior center here. It's a two-story building, but allows it to have a larger roof, so it starts to, it will be bigger than a residential house. And then transitioning to the three-story building here, in front of Sutton Street being on here, it allows for a full-solved roof on top of it. One thing I like to point for, and we talked with Minko back and forth about it, was keeping, working with the deck towers. I like them on my buildings because they break up the elevation and give you some depth and allow for little details up top, like the gables and over here, hip, things like that. So I think it softens it. Between the deck towers, more of a residential scale, it softens that face that's on Sutton Street. Because the parking's in the back, the main entrance is over here, and all the building facing where people would be approaching the building. So the rendering you have in front of you is from the other side, but this one did for here for landscaping, but also took into account the building as well, which has not worked out quite well. Then we transitioned from there in the back as a four-story building, which this would screen it, and then as you get into the back area, it's a screen, the four-story back with the buildings around it. I think there was a question about height. So the three-story building in front to the peak, and that's on the elevations that you have, it's well under the fifty-five, of course, but to the very ridge would be forty-six, forty-six foot, six inches, and to the eve itself, bring along here, would be thirty-one foot, four inches. When you get to the four-story buildings in the back, took everything I could for the fifty-five, so fifty-four foot, ten inches to the ridge, which is achieved by doing steeper slopes around the perimeter, so you can still see a roof, but then it shallows up to get to a ridge to hold that fifty-five foot. The gables still work the same on the deck towers, so you still get that same effect that you have here, and it's shown in the rendering you have in front of you as well. So that same effect happens on the four stories. And then that eve would be the forty, forty-two foot, five inches to that eve. If we move on to some of the architectural details in the rendering you have in front of you, some of the things I tried to work with was the, the senior center has a lot of white appearance to it, so I worked with that, and it brought in more white into the building, so the panel across the top is the white PVC panels. White trim, heavier trim with a residential building, larger building, heavier cornerboards, and then raised trim at the, in this case, the third story line and the four stories would be the fourth story line right below the windows, a raised trim detail and then above the stone. We can use that for now. It's pretty close. One subtle difference I'll point out. And then above the stone is another heavier raised detail that runs around the perimeter. The different materials help break up the height, give you a base level, being stone and solid. The siding in the middle brings, introduces the color into the building and the white paneling across the top. One difference between this one and the one I gave you, and I couldn't help myself, just kept tweaking with it, we decided last week to try a black windows, and we all thought it made sense, it looks good, coordinates with the senior center, there are black windows, and went with the black shutters at the ends to sort of accentuate the ends and look at the building. Some of the details with the craftsman-style columns at the entrances here and brackets at the corners to give it some more detail, some of those areas we're gonna coordinate a little bit further with John and his building. He has some similar elements on his. We're gonna tweak ourselves, we'll see who wins out. The, no, and then the color, another color introduction is the stone. I changed this to a darker gray for the entrance to help give it the pop and work out the gray in the stone, and the black also fills out the stone color, so introduce more color into it.
Can we see, so I think we can come back, and if people have questions about architecture or anything, I will ask questions about it, but.
You can interrupt any time if you have something.
So I'm gonna do that now.
Feel free.
Can we, do you have a view of the buildings from Surrey, the four-story buildings?
No, and we thought we'd focus on this one because we thought that would be your interest being Sutton Street.
No, no. Maybe it is for other people, my bigger interest is Surrey.
I'm sorry, what? Probably about the single most important thing related to this project is how the buildings pass on the Surrey Street.
Right. So the, looking at it from Sutton Street, right now we're looking at an empty Knights of Columbus building and an ugly field or Columbia gas vehicle, so. I mean, this is nice, and I appreciate your craftsmanship here, but I care much more about what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna impact the people on Surrey and how tall they are. Do they have balconies? Are people gonna be looking out at each other? That's why I asked about the screening. Those are the things we actually care a lot more about than the Sutton Street one.
Are you asking, Mr. Chairman, are you asking for, say, a rendering from someone standing on Surrey Drive or something?
Yeah, yeah. So here I see three stories, and I see balconies and people walking in and out, so I, oh yeah, so this is if you're looking, if you're in someone's backyard in Sutton Street, if I'm in my backyard and I'm playing with my kids, what am I looking up at? Now, I'm hoping that I'm looking up at a bunch of trees and a nice fence, so that's what you told me, but they're small trees, so hopefully there'll be bigger trees and a nice fence. And then if I'm looking up above that, am I looking at decks with balconies? I told, we're not looking at lights, so that's good. What are we looking at? How tall is it, and what's that impact gonna be? Because the people driving all along on Sutton Street, I mean, unless you're going to the airport, nobody's staying there. Everyone's just driving back and forth, driving back and forth. So to me, just one person near that, I'm not so concerned about that. As long as you meet the FAA and it doesn't look ridiculous, and I think this looks very nice, but I care much more about what it looks on the back end to the people that are gonna be affected by that.
I would take a study in terms of elevations and tree heights and things like that, could certainly try to work out something that.
Well, you gotta know what it's gonna look like, right? Like this, at least. I mean, can you do this?
Analysis from Surrey Drive, so then, it looks like you're, and unless I'm getting this wrong, you've kind of given, one of your sketches shows a view shed from Sutton. Can you do the same thing from Surrey as if you were?
Yeah, it's a very different study because of the trees and the elevation changes and things like that. So it's, I wouldn't want to just simply give you a rendering of the building, taking this and turning it into a four-story, because I think what you're getting at is what does it actually look like from their house on that street? So therefore, we should take into account the trees and the screening that's existing or will remain and start to look at it.
I mean, I'd like to see both. I'd like to see, let's say there are no trees, let's see what it looks like, and then let's say, okay, there are gonna be trees.
I think in the summer, if you're standing there right now, the answer is you wouldn't see anything. The bigger concern obviously is the weather.
So that's what I wanna know. But even just a picture, I mean, what does the four-story building look like? I mean, does it look the same as this, just with another story?
Yeah, the siding.
Are there balconies on?
The siding area becomes taller.
Yeah.
The top panels are the same, the stone at the bottom is the same, but the middle area.
Yeah, I mean, what we're gonna end up doing, and I mean, this gets at going to a site visit, we'd actually probably like you to do the same thing that we asked the other folks to do, is do a form test and see how high the top of the building is, and then we can compare it to the person's house, because we don't wanna be in a position where the house is here and the building is like this, and it dwarfs it. I mean, that's, that is a real concern, in terms of scale of the two things, and that's what we want to understand.
Understood. Yep, we can take a look at it.
I guess, just a question, the architectural style is, and this may be a question for Mr. Loof, that how does this style match up with the other projects you've done at talent? Just trying to sort of, this looks, and I don't mean it all to be a play, but it looks blandly suburban, whereas I think a lot of your other projects have just, I don't know, nice pop to them, but I find them pretty attractive, the architecture all along.
Thank you. For us, it's always, you know, it's an iterative process, so we keep going through it, trying to, I mean, in this suburban environment, we're not gonna do something that's wildly modern because it just won't fit in. So we're trying to take something that looks somewhat New England-y, but put a little, enough modern into it. Like, when we looked at the senior center, we said, gee, we think that kind of strikes the right balance, and Rob was, I think, going in the same direction. So I think we'll keep working towards that and seeing what other elements we can put in there.
You know, I don't know, I understand, because you do put the, sort of, the New England themes in there, but with a contemporary touch, and this, this, I don't know, it just, and maybe, you know, again, it's hard to look at a simple picture and get it, but, you know, like, like your past style, I would incorporate some of those elements.
I think, for me at least, and it may be the safer, you know it when you see it. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, but you keep iterating, all of a sudden you say, ooh.
Yeah.
So we know how far, what the distances between those back buildings and the residences that are on Surrey?
Greater than a hundred feet.
Over a hundred, okay.
We get a little more exact than that, but it doesn't have to be tonight. So the two things that we like to know are the distance between, one, the setbacks, but then, you know, building to yard and building to buildings. I guess that's three things.
Is that the scale? Yes. That's the scale, yes. The nearest point. Here to here, that's greater than a hundred feet. And so, and everything else.
You couldn't get the exact.
We'll get it in a second.
Yeah.
I can get it plus or minus, because we, I mean, yeah, if we're going down a field survey, I can get it within, you know, five feet or so.
What's it to the site? What's it to the property line?
So it's forty-six feet to this bump out into the main, how big's that, John? Eight feet?
Yeah, a little less.
Yeah, so fifty-four feet to the main building line here. So the corners are forty-six, and then it's fifty-four here. So what you can see is, yeah, the zoning's forty, forty feet.
The other things I was just gonna point out, that John and I coordinated a few details on this, but one thing we did point out, just reflying here, I think, introducing the interesting work with the similar standing seam style roof that he has on the senior center. And then on PC01, it'd be a layout for the amenity space. So that would have, one unit replaced with leasing office and that functional area for the leasing aspects. And then on the left side, that sticks out from the building, would be a gathering areas, a fitness center, kitchen area in the back behind that, and that would lead you out to the outdoor gathering area with a pergola and a fire pit, shown in the back there. And the elevation for that building is towards the end at the very back of the site. Let me show you all that. What entrance?
Did the fire department have any comments about the fire, I just know in other projects they've had comments about?
They're looking for a path analysis. That was one of the comments, so.
Yeah, I was more good about the fire pit, I know.
Oh, about the fire pit? No, he didn't comment on the fire pit, but I can ask.
Yeah, I know they commented on that, on other ones about.
Typically, it's a gas, so really contained fire pit.
As long as they look at it.
I believe they commented that, they had a comment about having meet the fire codes.
Yes, but not the, right. They didn't call it the pit specifically.
Okay, just asking.
Honestly, I was wondering if you could talk to us about is, like, the way you laid out the building. Like, you talked about, you know, three stories at the front because you wanted to maintain the roofline with the other, but just sort of exactly where you placed the buildings, you know, I do notice, like, one is longer than the other, the one in the back is even narrower but fatter. Just how did you do it? What were your constraints? You know, how, it looks like you probably tried to get as far away from the houses as you could. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
I can, a little bit, and then Scott maybe offer some other comments. Well, a lot of it was driven by letting the parts and the screen parts in the bill, and then maintaining this connection between these two, so we could maximize the parts and then over here. Also, this side here, the slope, putting most of the building towards this side, less of a concern with the neighbor and the height difference over here, so the building being here, and trying to minimize this end and use screening and allow for more elements over here to be open more to the residential side. And then from a site point of view, Scott can give you some of the aspects of this, but I, at one point, we did have a full building, new, and I'm not a big fan of those. It takes, I like to break the buildings up, get you more, better units on the ends, so some of the actual orientation of them were just to maximize this space, so using all the setback we could by turning this one, and that related to this being longer and getting its lines maximized to basically maximize the perimeter to allow for as much as we could in the middle of the park.
Can I just follow up to that with a question? So, I mean, I really appreciate the earlier description you had of the building and your sample of the one along Sutton Street, but from my perspective, if I have the numbers right, so building one is three stories and building three is four, right?
And two, yes.
And two, right. And just from my perspective, and I'm sure I'm missing something from a design perspective, but given our sort of sensitivities, I had expected to see three, building three being three stories, and building one, if you had to have four stories, building one. And the reason is, similar to what you've already heard from the chairman, is that reduces the scale where we have our highest sensitivity, which is neighboring the residential part. And then, of course, building two, you know, that's bordering a commercial property, so at least for me, maybe less concern there. But can you talk a little bit about why building one is the three-story rather than building three?
Yeah, I may be better for that. So I always like these conversations because you guys are coming in and kind of seeing this for the first time, right? I can tell you, we've been through at least twenty different designs over the last three years, and kind of getting to this point, we've been studying this, evaluating, you know, doing surveys. I mean, this, this isn't just we throw it on a plan and run with it, right?
Sure.
And then we, and then, you know, make up as another property, and then we gotta do it again, you know? This is an iterative process, and we try to work this, and this is, you know, you guys get to start seeing, and we keep working, we keep fine tuning. So a lot of the considerations that we made getting into the site layout, you know, you hit the nail on the head, on this side, this seemed to be the very little concern, you know, we're up against a commercial parking lot.
Yeah.
There's lots of, these will overlook, you'll see these from Osgood, because, you know, this comes across and you gotta hill up, and then you get the building, so you'll see that'll be distinct. So we weren't too concerned about that. That's why this was here and not here.
Yeah.
Right? We were looking at what's around the property. Obviously, you get Surrey Drive here, and we're looking, all right, well, we have a small lot here, and we have a wooded area, and the trees kind of get wider and further with the properties that go this way, but you have a good wooded budget buffer, you know, some on the property and some off. Eric's mentioned before, you know, we're gonna be looking to preserve as many trees on the property, maintain that buffer, but we saw there is a vegetation. but we saw there is a vegetated buffer already there, okay? So we recognized that fact, and we recognized that the houses were a little further away here, and really, the area where it was thin was along this edge, and we talked about this a little already. So we did, we oriented this building with just that face
Right.
in that direction.
Yeah.
Right? And then we focused more, you know, the landscaping screen, we talked about that, and probably provide some more information and detail on that on this edge here, facing the parking. So we're really trying to take the load off of this, because this is really the view corridor where you can see it. This, this is more shielded and protected from the existing vegetation that's there, in that we would be filling in as part of the project. Any tree, you know, the trees that come down here will be filled back in on this line. And that's really why, you know, the, these buildings are four stories, and then we get to the, the front building here. That started as a four-story building. Our first, our first pass is, we started a four-story. You know, my first thing what to do was to kind of look at, all right, no zoning relief, what fits, how can we do this? And we start looking at the massing with the senior center, and we look at, you know, this quarter, I guess you're saying people fly by, but when you fly by and you get a taller building right in the street, you kind of feel like you're driving through a canyon, and, and, you know, we're hearing your comments for the first time, but one thing we were sensitive to was too much height here, which on a main entrance border coming into North Andover.
Right.
And we didn't want to overburden that frontage. So what we did is we reduced the height of this, and it pushed that out.
Right. Well, let me say first off, at the very beginning of the presentation, when you explained how you reduced one of the buildings from four to three stories, that was of great interest.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, applaud what you've done there. So I'm not asking that you go back to four stories. It was more a question of why not the three-story one next to residential versus, you know, I, but, please, I love the idea that you figured out how to reduce one of them from four to three.
With a variance, right? So, and if the false zoning board says, well,
Sure.
we know about variance, we're back to a four-story building, and it's,
Yeah.
you know, twenty feet shorter, if you like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So really, so what we're trying, you know, again, we have a hundred thirty-six housing units that we presented through town meeting,
Yeah.
two-thirds of which are single bedrooms, so we're already trying to make these things as economical as possible. You know, the footprints, the square footages per unit are?
Eighty-fifty for single, one-bedroom, nine-fifty.
Yep.
Or else for.
And then you have some two-bedrooms. So, you know, we're backing into kind of a minimal footprint per unit to get to the buildings, and then we got a floor area. So, you know, that necessitated the four stories. We did not want to have a massive building, for example, take a story off this and just fill that in. Now we have this big L. You know, we've got a bigger mass here with no.
No, no, I agree, yeah.
Just to echo you, I think you guys have done a really good job at moving things around and making it better than it was. I think, first of all, I think the project is great, right? We all voted, it was overwhelmingly supported at town meeting. The idea of the housing here and the senior center, and I think you guys did a great job with the parking, and I think you're really taking into consideration a lot of different things. So I think you guys are doing a great job with that, and I think it's very difficult to come in and have five or six people say, well, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do this? So granted, and not saying, don't keep some of these at, at four, four and three. I guess I'm just still wondering, couldn't, couldn't this back one be three and the other ones be four?
I mean, I, I don't know that when we were, when we go out, we could see it, because I understand the point is that from the impact of the total town, as opposed to the individual people to trade off, that having four stories right in the street might be overwhelming and everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it is close to, yeah, no.
So, I mean, I get that.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're also sensitive to individual people who live there, who already lived there, so that's, you have to balance the two.
I feel like this area is getting pretty heavily developed. Like, we have those Princeton properties, those come out, those are, how tall are all those? Fifty, right. I mean, and, right, right. It's like, so I mean, I know, I mean, they're a little bit further back from, they're, they're further back from the streets, so I get that, but you're getting into this area and it's becoming higher, so, and I know a lot of people don't like that. I personally don't really have a problem with it. I guess the question, right, to John's point, is what would it look like, and how, how much of an impact would it have on the front?
Yeah.
Versus how much of an impact would it have on the side?
You know, it's just that when we get to the discussion of what does it look like from Sari?
Yep.
It's a, it's a different discussion with what does a four-story look like from Sari, as opposed to what does a three-story look like from Sari, and so we're just exploring.
Right, and what does a four-story look like with twenty-foot-high tree versus a three-story with twenty-foot-high tree?
I mean, it is interesting. I hadn't really thought of the fact that the building was closest, you turn over the side, so it
Yeah.
somewhat mitigates
Yeah.
the impact. That was something I hadn't really.
And I think that goes to the point that, you know, we, we, we're not spending a lot of time saying, oh, this part is great, this part is great, but I agree with the chairman and with John, that that, it's, the evolution of the project was in a very positive direction, and we really do appreciate that.
It's very good, just can it be great, you know, that's.
I think another thing, too, just getting into the colors, too, from my perspective, when I see a lighter building, it doesn't look as massive. I feel like it breaks up a little bit on the skyline easier, too. It's some of the lighter, brighter colors there, as we mix in, but I think, I think we've heard the comment, we need to see some different kind of perspectives of what we're looking at, you know, from, from the street here in, and, you know, different angles, so we'll we'll see if we can put that together for you.
Okay.
We'll look at it.
Great. So, do you guys have anything else? Because I'd like, there are, I know there are some members of the Poli.
Yeah, we just have, I think Gene and I wanted to just close with, I've already talked about why the heck we're here tonight, because we've gone through all this presentation, we have talked about why we're here. The permits we've requested, so we can, you have the applications.
We haven't seen any escaping from the senior center perspective, and we do have that one budding property that adjoins that. So if you want to see that quick, it's a one-page.
One page, sounds good.
Kidding.
We have a slide.
Do you have it on a slide, or we have a board here?
You had it up earlier, Monica?
I, I know.
The site, can you start with the site plan and then all the stuff?
One moment, please.
So, why don't we start with the overall site plan, and then I'll go and talk about, do you want me to talk about the screening? Next. So, throughout the site, as you see throughout the parking lot, we've designed planting islands, and part of the things with the seniors centers, we're really closely with John, because the seniors are really into those plants and the colors and the textures. And they actually really appreciate having a lush, enriched landscape that has a lot of color and interest. So we do use the large deciduous trees throughout the island to bring down the scale of the building, to also offset the heat effect of the parking lot. We're using a mix of honey locust, plane trees, and tulip trees, which are all large deciduous and shade trees that offer varying interest throughout the season. We have a mix of evergreen and deciduous low shrubs throughout the site to give different seasonal interest, evergreen and flowering. We have a large mix of native plants, so that we do kind of respect the natural environment around us, and we are supporting the pollinators and all of the different planting progressive movements that we are seeing throughout Massachusetts. We use some different color flowering, small ornamental trees at the building edge to give some interest and moves out of the window, as well as pine and around the patio area at the back. There are three rain gardens on site, and that is going to be a mix of deciduous sedges, ferns, and native perennials that work in conjunction with the stormwater management to help clean the runoff throughout there, again, offering different seasonal interest in these areas, so that they don't just look like the old conventional detention mason. They actually, depending on the season and how, which we have, they actually may fall or they can have more of a different color interest when it's dry. But they do, like you said, work in conjunction with the stormwater management plan. And then the last piece is the, or it's here that we have, which is the budding edge with the residential neighbors, and we put some a good amount of consideration into the fact that we are developing this plan, and there is a parking lot here. So what we thought about is this three-layer approach to screening, where we're going to look at using this gray six-foot cedar board fence that has some interest. It's not flat, it's going to give help with breaking up the space, and then we're going to come in with a mix of evergreen, running evergreen shrubs and deciduous trees, and what we've found is by diversifying the mix of plants and heights, you really get this thick screen, because you bring the screen from the ground up. And it starts with your lower evergreens, like your hollies and your rhododendrons, that give you kind of the thick mid-layer, and then you come to the secondary layer of deciduous multi-stem trees, and then you have your evergreen, your bigger trees that are going to get to be thirty, thirty-five feet tall. In this case, we're specifying an Austrian pine, because it has that dense look. It's not going to get the lower kind of blankness like you get with some of your white pines and your other evergreen trees. And then we'll also take the deciduous trees and we'll bring them along top to kind of break the view above the fence, because as you know, it does take a little while for the evergreen trees to grow up. And then behind all of that, we put the six-foot cedar board fence to help block any light passage from, if you do happen to have night activities, which is kind of rare on a senior center, from headlights, but really obstructing the view and clearing, keeping this completely separate from this neighbor. That's really it.
Thank you. All right.
I will add, that being said, that neighbor does have an existing PVC fence, fairly, no, it looks good, and I will say we're likely going to work with them in terms of the fence, so we, we're going to have back-to-back fences, likely, but we do need to work with him just to make sure it all works together. So what I thought would be helpful is we summarize really what the ask is, what we're here for, in terms of special permits and waivers. So from the senior center perspective, we are asking for a waiver of the traffic study, the full-bone traffic study, but we've incorporated our data with the developer, and he's going to pull that into his analysis. The curb cuts, according to the bylaw, have a max width of twenty-five feet. Our shared driveway is actually at thirty-six feet, and we're asking for, the planning board has discretion to waive that and increase it to thirty-six. It's not by special permit, it's just according to site plan review. So the reason for the thirty-six is, as we discussed, there's actually two exit lanes, a right and a left turn, and one entrance lane, and we just feel it provides for a safer environment exiting onto Sutton. Also, there are special regulations that in order to determine sufficient parking, the building commissioner looks at our table of parking and table of uses, and he assigns a calculation to a certain use. In this case, he actually wasn't able to determine a use of a senior center or municipal building that falls under this type of activity. And so there's a provision that then we apply an application to the planning board, and you concur either that it is sufficient based on an analysis. And what I suggest is the library calculation is four-point-five per thousand gross floor area. That calculation would account for sixty-three parking spaces at this site. Again, we have an existing parking lot with eighty-one, we have peak uses in terms of programming, we want to make sure it's sufficient and allows for annual events that, that do exceed the normal daily activities. And so town meeting time, we talked about eighty dedicated parking spaces, this is eighty-one dedicated parking spaces, and we think the configuration and circulation is suitable. We're here for site plan review, of course, and we're also here for a special permit. Again, there's a bylaw provision that allows for a special permit to park on a satellite lot, and so in this plan where one Suri Drive is, we're before the Z B A to allow for municipal use in an R four district. And what that also entails is our parking is going to be a satellite lot. We require to have legal documentation that says that parking will be available for the life of the use. And town council has reviewed all that, and so one of the special permit applications is to allow for that.
Okay. And on the residential side, we did have, starting on page six of the narrative of our application, we did ask for a series of what I call relatively benign site plan waivers, one of which in here, these are on plan requirements, so changing the scale and the locus map to make it more clear, going offsite, showing topography offsite, which we really can't trespass and survey, but we didn't show, see that, that added any benefit to the plan, even if we could get it. We don't have the signs designed yet, we would come back with probably a future application for those. Right now, the planting plan is schematically shown out, so instead of providing a full detailed planting schedule, we asked for a waiver on that. We did ask for a waiver on the traffic study, although that has now been completed, so that's no longer on the table. And then we asked for a waiver for preparing a sewer and drainage profile, which in this case really isn't necessary, because we don't have a long linear roadway type of drainage system. It's a parking lot, so it's very difficult to put a profile together, and neither one of the peer review consultants, you know, asked for that in there as one of their comments. So just some, just some site plan requirements that we asked for relief from. Getting into section one ninety-five, seven-point-four F, requesting a waiver to allow a height increase in the B two district to fifty-five feet from thirty-five feet, and that will accommodate the hundred thirty-six units of housing we've been talking about tonight. So that is just a waiver under the zoning district that was approved at town meeting for the site. As far as special permits, the multifamily use in the B two district is a special permit, so we're here asking for that special permit. We are here asking for the common driveway special permit, which we would be sharing with the senior center. We're asking a special permit to allow up to fourteen parking spaces, where parking spaces abut each other in a parking lot without putting a landscape island in. The maximum is typically ten, so we're asking for a special permit to eliminate that island, and I'll tell you the area, it's kind of cumbersome, but it's this entire area parking here, and you see each of these aisles are bookended by landscape islands, and we just felt, because these aren't twenty spaces long, where it would make sense to put an island in between, they're only seven, you know, seven spaces long, putting an island in the middle of those really, it's cumbersome, and it doesn't add a tremendous amount of benefit, so, and plus, you know, six parking spaces would be lost, which we felt, you know, would be also not in the best interest. So we did ask for a special permit for that. And then with regards to parking, we did lay this out to make the site as efficient as possible and provide as much landscaping as possible, focusing on creating buffers, keeping the buildings off of lot lines where we can, keeping parking underneath the buildings and, you know, in areas where, you know, we're reducing that impervious footprint. So we're asking for a wave, a special permit to reduce the parking by, from two-hundred-twenty-four spaces, which would be required, to two-hundred-fifteen. It's only nine spaces. Effectively, one, one aisle of parking is what we're asking for. And as I mentioned previously, this exceeds the marketability need for the development, so the developer is more than comfortable with the one-point-five-eight spaces per unit, and the the same Institute for Transportation engineers, national standards that Giles was talking about in doing the trip generation study, they also do parking analysis, and the national rate for mid-rise apartment projects like this is one-point-three-five spaces per unit, so it's even lower. So we feel it's more than adequate parking, and trying to force that in just didn't really make sense on this, on this project. And of course, site plan review special permit would be the last one we're, we're requesting you to review in this application. Thank you. This is a long hearing.
I missed a couple waivers, once I read them. So it's also the scale of the locus, one inch equals five-hundred feet. It's also the. A sewer and drainage profile waiver requested for the short-distance direct connections to the proposed connections in Sutton Street, and not showing the contours within fifty feet of the possible boundary. All three of those were from both of us.
So, before we get to public comments, from the perspective of the applicants, what's next, and how much time do you need? I think we've talked about that we want to do a site visit. And what's next for, to answer questions and things that we've brought up, to go back and forth with peer review, where do we stand?
So I believe we're on your July thirtieth agenda, at that we have an A and R plan to present to you, because it's important to have that endorsed by you in order to get variances if they are approved in the August meeting with the Z B A. As far as additional information, I don't think from the senior center side that you've requested any, however, from the multifamily, they'll be prepared to present that at the next meeting. As far as a site visit, whenever you want, I, I think that is predominantly the landscape buffer between Sari Street residents.
I don't think there would be a time to do it between now and then. Right.
Project.
So.
What is that date?
On the twenty-fifth for.
Of Ju, of July?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you want to come right after that one, or no?
That one's tentatively scheduled for six-thirty P M.
It's up to you.
What do people think?
I think it'll be kind of tight. I think Avalon Bay is going to be.
It could be longer.
Yes. Okay. So if you guys want to work that out and let us know what day works, then we can do that.
When's the August meeting?
August twentieth is your meeting. The Z B A's is August thirteenth.
Okay. And I think it'll have to be between the thirtieth and, sometime in August.
Okay.
I think we can get it done and still have a lot to go on for that August meeting. Okay, so why don't we? Okay, so why don't we take, if there are members, I know there are members of the public here, if anyone wants, nobody has to say anything, but if anyone wants to come up and say anything, I know you've heard of some of our concerns.
Hi, I'm Patrick Duffy. My wife Cheryl and I live at 59 Surrey Drive, so we are the abutter on the south side of the property, eastmost property.
Could you actually just come and show us where you are?
So we are at this property right here.
Okay.
So we have the eastmost side, and the property actually goes down like this, so we are affected by nearly the entire south side of this development here.
Okay, thank you. So the way, before you guys, so the way, there's very, any comments you want to have? You just made your comments, if you have questions, address them to the board, get all your questions out, and then we'll bring up whoever we need to get them answered.
Excellent, thank you. First of all, I really want to thank you guys for your concern for the, for the residents of Surrey. This is a big project, and it's going to affect us dramatically, so we really appreciate your concern. I'd love to have all you come to our houses and see what a wonderful, just see how well-protected and quiet it is, and buffered by the existing woods. We've never had really any problems with noise or anything like that, that has happened at the nights, even when they had the bar down underneath. We could barely hear them at all, and the woods have provided that. Surrey was developed mainly around 1970, so these trees have done a wonderful job for decades now for the neighborhood. So I am very concerned about just how much of these woods are going to be taken down for this property. Based on what you can see there, roughly a quarter to a third of the trees are on our property, three-quarters to two-thirds are on the Sutton Street property, and they can take down quite a bit. The developer said there's about 75 feet of woods now, and they only have to, what, respect 25 feet of that in terms of the woods? There's a lot of mature trees there that will come down. Your concerns about the four-story building are exactly what our concerns are. When they take down these mature trees, what's it going to look like? Putting up 16-foot new trees or six-foot firs, a four-story building could rise completely above that. Are there going to be decks on the back of them? Will there be any protection against light and noise coming from the windows and the decks? I really don't want to have dozens of units looking down on my backyard. You can see we have a pool back there, we use the backyard quite a bit. Lighting, it was nice to hear that there would be no flood lighting on that side, but there's still lighting coming from the units. Fences, I would really not like to see white fences delineating this property. The fact that you can't really tell where the property line is right now is a nice thing. You throw white fences in there, and it's going to be very clear that there's, it's going to be very clear how little of the woods that we own. So if we could do green or brown fences, I think that would be best. Parking, I don't think that anybody's ever mentioned whether the parking plans have, whether that includes a number of unit, a number of parking spots for visitors, or will they be parking on Sutton or on Surrey Drive as they overflow the existing parking lot? And then, and then there's traffic. So my understanding is that the only egress out for both the residential and the senior center is going to be onto Surrey, and it's a right-hand turn only?
I believe they, it was said today, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's going to be, that the driveway onto Sutton, which is now going to be, they're asking to be 36 feet, is going to be, and one lane in, one lane out. Is that right?
Two lanes out.
Or, or, two lanes in, oh, thank you, two lanes in.
It's the senior center that's exiting onto Surrey.
Only the senior center.
And only right turn onto Surrey, only the senior center.
Well...
But only the senior center.
Only the senior center, okay. Right turn only signs are nice, they're not always honored, and there are smart, small children who live right at that, where that egress point is.
Question for Gene or whomever, but is that right turn going to be designed, like, is there going to be some means where you essentially enforce that?
It could be, right now it's a T, it's narrow, right, right turn only, and do not enter, but if there's a desire...
Yeah, I think any, it's, any kind of tilt to that strongly suggests you're not going to turn left there.
We could look at that, run it by Public Safety, because they need to get in an emergency call.
Yeah, if you could look at that, that'd be great.
Some of the residents, residents on Surrey have discussed the possibility of trying to make a dead end right there, so people coming out would have to turn right, like they do at the middle school with the gate, maybe having a gate across Surrey. I don't know if that can be part of this deal, part of what you guys consider?
So it's outside, it's in the public right of way, so we don't have authority over that, so...
Is that something the residents would have to pursue on their own?
It's a public road, right? Yes, I think that, it's a public way, so there are, there are legal criteria required for, actually for ending a public way, so I think there's a bunch of hearings, Board of Selectment, Town Manager, and then there's a whole...
I'm sure.
There's, I think there's a state process actually for ending, for discontinuing a public way, so it's complicated, but it's not something that we can do.
Right. Well, I mean, there would still be a public way.
Theoretically, it's possible, but it's not, not for us.
Right, okay, fair enough. Last thoughts are, clearly the developer is trying to maximize their, their return on their investment here, by building up as high as they can, and by doing that, they can get a lot of units in, which means they need a lot of parking, which means they have to maximize the space, and how many trees they have to take down. Why not scale it back a little bit? Why not make the, the two four-story buildings, three-story buildings? You'd have fewer units, you'd have fewer parking space requirements, and you could reduce the size of the, of the property and leave more buffer to the neighborhoods. There are, there are options here. I really liked your idea of switching the four-story building to building one, and leaving building three a three-story unit. I think if you look at, as your suggestion was, to look at what the view would be from Surrey, that would be more palatable to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Two? One?
How, how this project is going to affect...
Tell us who you are, where you live.
I'm sorry, Maggie Chabon, I'm at 32 Surrey Drive.
Okay.
I've been there since 2004, I've been in North Andover since 1998. How this project is going to affect the taxes on our properties? Is it going to get higher, lower, the same, or, and the property value?
Not a question that I can answer, I don't know that anybody's done an analysis of that.
Is this a done deal, and you guys talking about details, how big, how high, how this and that, or it's still not approved?
No, nothing's been approved, so tonight was the first night of the public hearings. Both the senior center portion and the multifamily portion require special permits, meaning that they have to convince a, at least four members of this board, four out of five, that they meet the special permit criteria in our bylaws, which, which we can pull up, but they talk about that we have to make certain findings about lack of impacts on the neighborhood and nuisance and things like that, we can, we can try to pull those up, but we have to make certain findings, that it's an appropriate use, and the site, the way it's, the site plan, the way it's set up is appropriate, and things along those lines, so that's why we're getting into all of these details. But at the end, after we go and look at the site, after we get some answers to all these questions, if we're satisfied that it's appropriate, given all the factors that we have to consider, then we'll vote on that, and if four people say yes, then it's approved, if not, then it's not approved. Usually there are a lot of, when, when a special permit is granted, it's almost always with numerous conditions about what would make it acceptable. So nothing's been approved, that's, we're still gathering information, that's the point of today's hearing.
And the vote is just on the board, it has nothing to do with the residents of the street, or Surrey, or North Andover, have we had?
Correct, it's just the members of this board. And then they're also, they're also going before the zoning board of appeals, which is a separate group that also has to make certain approvals as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin Robinson, 68 Surrey Drive, I live right across the street from the Duffy's. Patrick hit on a lot of stuff I wanted to say, so I'm going to make this really quick. Someone had brought up the point about the senior center, the size, the difference in the size, and it's definitely going to affect more people. It's almost doubling in size, so you're going to have, you know, the numbers that you rattled off concerning movie night, yoga, bingo night, what have you. You know, if there's space issues at the, at the current senior center, you know, doubling in size, you're going to get more seniors down there, which is going to lead to more traffic. And a big, a big issue is you have Fultz Terrace right, right off of Colgate, and you're going to have those people coming out and going down Colgate to Chadwick to Surrey, rather than coming out on Osgood, taking a left, and then going in the China Blossom, taking a left to get to the senior center. So there's clearly going to be more traffic coming down our street from those seniors that live in those buildings. And I still have to say, with the right-hand turn, a sign's not going to stop them, because I'll tell you one thing, when I have to get out to Sutton Street, I'm not going down Surrey Drive and trying to take a left. All day long, this car's going. A sign's not going to stop them from saying, I'm getting back to Fultz Terrace, I'll just go down Surrey Drive. That's, that's preposterous, I, I can't get over that one.
When you want to get out, which way do you usually go? Do you go down to...
I'll go to Chadwick Street, I'll go down and take a right on High Street, yeah. Or take a left, go down to the island and head down, because that traffic will back up to Artie's Corner, that's insane, you know, and if you have three seniors trying to get out at the same time, forget it, you're going to have a logjam at the end of the street. And I do want to mention, that last week's zoning board meeting, I'm not bringing up the zoning board, it's already been discussed here, the meetings, so I know it's apples and oranges between you guys and them, but the plans here are different than the plans that were unanimously, unanimously agreed upon at the town meeting. In fact, one of the ZBA members referred to it as a bait and switch, which I agree is probably not fair, but it, you're getting everybody to agree on one thing, and then you're seeing this. I mean, all the people that were at town meeting aren't here tonight, you know?
So I, I agree with you, this is different, but I think it's better than what we saw before.
That's fine, too, that's fine, too.
It's better.
That's fine, but it's still, it's still not ideal, the people that have been living there since the 70s, you know, you have people that are living there, you know, you could see pictures of this neighborhood where the trees were this small when they moved in, they're fully mature now, and Patrick's absolutely right, those trees come down, I mean, no disrespect to Methuen, but that's, this is what North Andover's slowly evolving into. You get them down, you get them all down on Osgood Street, which is fine, no one's looking at them, there's no one behind them, you have an airport, so if they want to live there with the flight path, with the planes coming over, that's all well and good. But man, it's... And, and lastly, in terms of the variances, you're talking about four acres of land where they're shoehorn, shoehorning all this stuff right in there, and the fact that they're asking for variances when they have that much land, I don't understand why the, why you can't make it smaller. And it was brought up, if they eliminate six apartments, you don't need any variances whatsoever. I mean, so that fence that Ms. Enright was talking about needs to be moved five inches, you know, so that guy's going to have his fence dug up for five inches? I just, and lastly, I'm going to end on this, it is good, it's a good project, he's making good use of the land, but why do they have to have an entrance? Why do they have to have a separate exit out of the, the senior center? Why can't they just enter and exit? It was brought up by one gentleman that it's confusing, it'd be confusing to the seniors. We all keep right in this country, I don't understand why they can't go in and out the same way. If you're having a shared driveway, why do they need a separate exit? You could eliminate that exit altogether and let them go down Sutton Street, and you're not going to have people driving down Surrey Drive, and we can keep our little neighborhood. I mean, we've been there a lot longer, you know, it's, it's like the people that move next to the train tracks, and then they want the train to stop blowing horns, shouldn't have bought the house, right? I mean, I don't know. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Langton, 10 Surrey Drive. Patrick, I thank you for all the points you brought up, I had the same idea about definitely needs, if it was a smaller footprint, three stories all the way around, you wouldn't have to deal with any of these variances, right? Less parking, all that. Concerning the trees, does anybody know, on the mature trees, how many of them will be saved, and how many of them will be cut down? Because it takes a long time to grow a tree to a mature height. And then lastly, what I want to bring up is, coming off of Osgood Street and turning onto Sutton Street, when I take a left onto Surrey, I've been rear-ended there, because the cars coming off of Osgood are going at a very good clip. The entrance that you're proposing for the senior center and this building is even closer to Osgood Street, so you are going to have a lot of people getting rear-ended. I'm just bringing up that point, thank you.
So that's good, no, you're good, can we get an answer on the trees? And I think that's actually a good point about the speed on Osgood, are there any thing we're doing to mitigate the speed coming that direction? Anyone, do we have an answer on the trees? If we need to get it at some other point, we can get it?
Not tonight, we haven't done a survey of the trees, so to actually quantify the number of matured trees that are there, the ones that'll stay and the ones that'll come down, we need to go out and do a survey.
Okay, so we'll get that answer, and Gene, me, you, or I don't know, I think it's a good point, and, I don't know, as a personal injury attorney, I know, I'm hurting my business here, but it would be good to get people to slow down there, I think that's a really good point, and if people are potentially queuing to get into the apartments, I don't think a light would necessarily work there, but... Yeah, I don't know, a speed bump, or, I mean, I don't know, it's worth...
Well, traffic goes faster coming onto Sutton, I think one of the reasons is because you have that right turn lane essentially, if you're coming south on Osgood, you can just speed along onto Sutton. There's no, there's no stop point or no slow point to make a more deliberate turn, it's almost like a continuation of Osgood.
Right, and so as people are coming in and out, that, you know, will somewhat slow traffic as people get to know that, but I, I think it's a good point, it would be nice to have something, it would be nice to have something to...
We did discuss that a little bit with the EPW director, saying, gosh, wouldn't it be great if that right turn lane wasn't there, it was a controlled intersection, but I believe that's a state road there, and that'd have to be included in the design of, you know, taking, making that third lane actually come up to the stoplight and then take a 90-degree right, as opposed to being helped to come around the corner at 40 miles an hour, we'd be all in support of that.
If you guys can brainstorm it, I mean, I'm sure this is something you've talked about, or, but I, I think it's a, it's a, it is a legitimate concern there.
So if I could add something?
So we've done a speed study out there, kind of reported you the information, so, but the one thing we could, sometimes we put radar speed signs out there, so you could have a sign that has the speed limit on it, and then it radar flashes the speed people are going in.
What's the speed limit there?
It's 35 mile an hour speed limit, so sometimes we find that's an effective way of reducing speeds.
You said, and you did do a speed study there? What was the, was that for that?
The speed study we did, we had, uh, the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that 85% of the cars travel at or under, is 37 miles an hour. So, not to say there aren't people going over 40 miles an hour there, but it, it's less frequent. But again, radar speed signs are helpful to reduce speeds, if that's a concern.
Do we know the distance from Osgood from that? I mean, I think, I agree, I'm not sure if it was Aaron or Peter, but that, that it's the, coming from the north that is the, where you really build up the speed with the distances before that driveway? If we could figure that out.
Falling out of the airport there is almost impossible with the cars coming up. It's fast.
But I don't seem to have a home when I'm going in and out of McAvoy. I don't know, just because there are more cars parked along the side there, so people do, and, so people do slow down a little bit there? Yeah, okay. Well, I, I'd like to continue to discuss that point, because I think it's a good one.
Hi, Cheryl Duffy, 59 Surry Drive. My husband just spoke, but he was very, very, general with the offer. We live at 59 Surry Drive, which is the one spot that's really going to be impacted the most, us and our next-door neighbors. So, we, as far as losing the, losing the trees and such, you said you're doing a site visit. I want to very specifically say, if you let us know when you're coming, you've got free range to our yard and our house.
So the site visit will, just like these meetings, will be publicly notified?
Okay.
So we'll pick a date, um, we'll probably pick that date after the next, at the next meeting, and we'll say, "We're coming at such and such date on such and such time." The way site visits work is that everything will hopefully be staked off, and at that point, hopefully, we'll have ribbons around trees that are staying, ribbons around trees that are proposed to come down, where the limits of the work are, where the buildings are gonna be, and if you're willing to let us come onto your property, we can do that. We're not, we can't have any discussion?
No, absolutely. We just want, we just want you to be aware that we're comfortable with your doing that. Um, I, I work quite locally, and my husband can, can certainly be home.
It'll definitely be publicly notified, so you'll...
Perfect, okay.
Keep paying attention, you'll find, you'll know when it is.
All right, sounds great.
Great.
So if I come out with certified mail, do we have to look in a newspaper?
Uh, I think it'll just be, we'll just, it's just the way that, um, normal publication, so it's on the website. If you get the town emails about when meetings are, it'll be like, planning board agenda, site visit, this date, this time.
It must be advertised at least 48 hours prior, too, so...
Right, but advertised as in put in on the website.
Right, uh, in the paper and posted.
You won't get any mailing.
Yeah, you're not gonna get a mailing.
There won't be, there, as, after the initial mailing, there aren't additional mailing, so everything...
You can sign up on the website to get our agenda sent automatically to you. So whenever they get posted, it will trigger an email, so everybody can do that for any type of work.
Yep, um, okay. Anything else to add?
Yeah, so I'd like to respond to a couple of those comments. So in speaking with the fence and that, he, he referenced that that gentleman would have to move his fence five feet inches possibly, but the fact of the matter is, the fence overlaps town property. He bought it in that condition, he didn't put the fence up by any means, and that's why I said, "I wanna work with them." I don't, um, it is what it is. I've met with him onsite, our architect has met with him onsite. We understand his position, and that's gonna have to be, maybe it'll, we'll work with him. The, as I said in the beginning, I mean, the, the plan that you saw tonight, the proposed conceptual plan, that was at your hearings, and certainly a lot of people in the room were at your hearings last year, but that was not presented at town meeting. We were, actually, it was on us, we, um, indicated that it was at the ZBA meeting, but that was not at town meeting. However, narratively, the town manager at the time did speak to four-story buildings, 136 units, associated parking, 57,000 square foot lot to be donated to the town for a senior center with 80 dedicated parking spaces. So, conceptually, the, the scale and the size was discussed, and as I said, the project, um, was for a zoning change to allow B2, to allow these building heights to be 55 feet, and it was overwhelmingly approved at town meeting. The prior zoning was general business, which, again, is certainly more intensive in terms of the uses that could be on the site and could be developed there. I think that's all I have.
I'm happy to speak to a few of the comments, if you want. First off, what Mr. Duffy said, we certainly agree that we don't want a white fence out there. We'd rather have something blend in, and we'd be happy to speak with the neighbors. We're thinking that the fence that the architect for the senior center proposed looks good, but whether it's gray, green, or brown, I think we're agnostic. We'd like to see something that looks good from both sides, because we're gonna be probably looking at it a little more than them. And I think what makes the most sense is, we're gonna have to snake it around some trees, so whether that, you know, is at the property line at one point, and then five feet unto our land at some point, that's, you know, I think that's our, that's our intent. To answer the next point, there will be decks on the front and back of the building, so you might, you know, if you can see through, you might see someone has a light on or something like that. Just like if they're looking and they can actually see your house, they might see a light in your house. As regards the parking, we're confident that the 1.58 spots per is more than enough for not only the residents, but for visitors. In a, you know, suburban location like this, we're usually shooting for around 1.5. We're a little over that here. There are a lot of people in the industry that are saying you should build less, because everybody's gonna use autonomous, Uber, this, that, and the other thing. I don't think we're there yet here. I think everybody that's gonna live here, for the most part, is gonna have a car. So, you know, we're not disillusioned about that, but I think we've got plenty of room to have people come visit. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. As far as the number of units, you know, we could have proceeded with the, the 40B application. We've done five or six of them, or seven of them in the past. And down the 164 units, we thought, trying to work with the town, give back a little bit and do this project, we think it's a much better plan from the streetscape and the massing and everything. But we don't wanna go below the 136 units, because, um, the way the economics work out, you know, we built Berry Farms three, four years ago. The cost to construct is probably 25 to 30% higher now. So when I look at, you know, if we were trying to, and I mentioned this at the ZBA, uh, meeting previously, we typically in the past would always try to build to a seven or seven and a half percent return on capital. These days, we can't get anywhere close to that. So now we're trying to at least hit a six, because if we go any lower, with our loan constant, we'll have negative leverage instead of positive financial leverage, which we really can't do. If we need to pay an investor to put their money in something like 7%, we're borrowing from the bank around 5%, we end up a little bit upside down. And the other problem, too, is when you get a little bit smaller, you don't have any management efficiency. So, we're gonna have to have a full-time property manager, you're gonna have a full-time onsite, kinda handyman that's doing a lot of things. You have a certain number of staff, whether you have 100 units or you have 250 units. It's kinda like when you build, um, elementary schools, right? Up to 500 students, you need a principal, you need X amount of staff. Whether you have 250 students or 500 students, you have the same amount of staff, and we're the same way. So that's one of the biggest expense drivers, is the actual people that you're paying to run the place and their benefits. So, as we crank back from 200 to 150 to 100 units, the efficiency really goes out the window, and we, we really get to the point where we can't afford to build it, so. It, it's a long-winded explanation of why we're really trying to stick to that number, because it, it gets tough for us. So, the gentleman, I, I didn't catch your name, about the taxes and how will it affect? So we've built single-family subdivisions, we've built apartments. If you think of it, these apartments, the town will not plow the snow there, the town will not pick up the trash there. They're really somewhat lower on town services than a single-family subdivision. So we built Peachtree Farms back in 2004 and '05, it was 24 single-family houses. And I believe there are 25 kids in there when it opened. I lived there myself. And I've got three in the school system now, so if each kid is 12,000 a year to educate, that's 36 grand. I think I'm paying 12,000 a year in taxes. So the town's losing money on me, and probably most other single-family. You know, one kid, if you've got one kid, the town is breaking even or losing money on you. So we built Berry Farms, there's only a couple kids in there, and they pay 750,000 a year in taxes. So I think a healthy town has a good mix of commercial, multifamily, single-family, all sorts of different people. You can have young people move into town, you can have people raise their kids in town, and then you can have people age in place in town, because you have housing opportunities like this with smaller units that are a little cheaper, you have a new senior center that people really deserve. So I think as far as how's it gonna affect our taxes, I think it's a positive to the town. I think most of these multifamilies, especially if there aren't three bedrooms, it really tends to be a positive to the town, but... Oh, and then, yeah, the last one, we'll have to do a, to, to look at the number of mature trees. We'll, we'll go out there and have a, have a survey done, so we can come up with a real number, as opposed to saying it looks like X. Thank you.
So Mr. Loth brought up the, the whole 40B plan. If you follow the chronology of this whole project, it's my understanding that 40B circumvents all the zoning bylaws, correct? So you're getting right around the zoning board. So he got around the zoning board with the 40B, and he pulled back, and he paid twice the market value for one Surry Drive. The number went from 163 to 136. But now he's back at the zoning board, looking for variances. And it was brought up by one of the members on the board that he subsequently created his own hardship.
I think the original idea was to do it as a 40B.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we are...
Okay, okay, and then this, but then the zoning, then the...
It was out of our jurisdiction, I, you know. The deep dark secret I will tell you about the zoning variances is that it's because...
We doesn't have enough land to do what he wants to do.
It, no, it actually doesn't.
Well, the setbacks are incorrect, right?
First of all, it's a ZBA issue, it's not our issue, but...
Well, I didn't bring up ZBA at all, it's been, it was brought up before.
You just did.
Originally, the, I, I understand this is a planning board.
I can stop, hey, fair enough, I heard what you said. I get it, okay.
But the fact that, the fact that the return on investment, he brings up numbers and everything else, on one hand, and then he, he paid twice the market value for one Surry Drive. For the senior center, which, which, and if you connect the dots, it's almost as if he's greasing the skids by donating the, the senior center.
I don't, I don't, I, yeah. It seems like...
That's fine, we can agree to disagree, but if you connect the dots, you can see what's going on. It's a big chess game.
Okay. Gene, uh, you got anything else for tonight? No, I mean, I think we're good. I think you have our questions, you have our concerns, you have our comments, you have the peer review comments. Run with them.
I think that was it, yeah, just make sure we have a, a punch list to, to go with for the next meeting, so.
Okay, great, so...
We appreciate your time.
We will continue to July 30th?
Thank you all for spending a Thursday night here.
So we have a discussion item? Is it a quick discussion item?
Yep, the downtown improvement master plan.
Yeah.
So as a result of the master plan, there were several, um, goals, strategies related to the downtown. One of my objectives this year is to create a downtown, um, master plan. And so we have engaged with a consultant, it's gonna kinda follow the same scale, same, um, path as the master plan for the community, in that there is a, um, ad hoc committee that I've assembled of primarily business owners downtown, one property owner downtown that does not have a mixed-use building, and Tanya Hotfit from the Mills. And so they're just kind of an ad hoc committee that will run existing conditions by, things like that. But, um, the committee, the, I'm sorry, the consultant will start the process within the next few weeks, and we'll certainly have stakeholders that we're gonna invite to meetings to just talk about...
Residents?
Resident, there'll be public forums just like the master plan, yes, at least three of those. So, but, but there's key stakeholders we wanna talk to, get their ideas, their thoughts about the master plan goals, things like that, and any other goals that they would like to see addressed. So, we actually had a kickoff meeting with that ad hoc committee last night, and within the next few weeks, we anticipate more meetings with stakeholders, so.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out on Thursday. I think it was helpful not to have this last Tuesday. That would have been a long night.
Yes.
So, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.